Today is Thursday, January 23rd, 2025, and the time is 7:00 PM. This meeting of the Prosper ISD Board of Trustees is hereby called to order according to Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Representing the quorum this evening, we have Mr. Webb, Mrs. Dixon, Mr. Cavender, Mr. Linker, Mr. Van Wolf, and myself, Bill Beavers. The Board of Trustees extends its heartfelt gratitude to our entire Prosper ISD community. We're deeply appreciative of our residents who approved a $2.7 billion bond for new schools in construction, our dedicated teachers and staff who tirelessly serve our students and families, our parents who support our teachers and campuses through volunteering and partnering with us in their child's education, our exceptional campus and district leaders whom we believe are the finest in the great state of Texas and continuously strive for excellence. Your collective commitment to Prosper ISD is what makes our district thrive. Thank you for choosing and supporting our schools. This evening, Mr. Van Wolf has our invocation.
You got it. Do you join me in prayer? Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to come together as a group, as the board. Lord, thank you for everyone in this room and this amazing place we call Prosper ISD and this community and everyone here, Lord. We ask that you continue to provide security and we ask for the peace of your presence to continue to surround our community, Lord, both our staff, our students, our community, and all the amazing educators in Prosper ISD. Lord, we ask that you provide the board wisdom and discernment as we discuss the matters of the schools this evening, Lord, and we ask you continue to provide bright days ahead for us, Lord, and thank you for the blessing that you continue to pour over this amazing community. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Texas pledge.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, and Mr. Cavender, you've got the reading of the board vision.
The board's vision is to ensure a safe and supportive educational environment that promotes academic excellence and opportunities, honors tradition, fosters student learning, facilitates effective recruitment and retention of talented educators, and grows all people at all levels.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. As always, this meeting is being conducted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, which can be found in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. All of our voting must be in public, but we can certainly privately discuss certain items, including but not limited to matters regarding individual employees, individual students, land acquisitions in real estate, school safety and security, and matters requiring legal advice. However, after that private discussion, any final vote must be in complete view of the public. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the agenda for tonight's meetings was posted for the public to view at least 72 hours before the meeting. Okay, now we will have upcoming dates that you'll see there. The one to draw everybody's eyes to is still the bad weather bake-up day. We've had two bad weather days, but we're good right now, so.
Yeah, so we're still off right there.
That's right, still off.
But something had happened, so.
That's right, so all kids hoping for the off day there.
No, snow.
That's right, we're gonna have it. Knock on wood, do the dancing, all that you do. Okay, celebrations.
Yes, I'd like to invite Mayor Bristol to come up from the town of Prosper. We're honored to have him tonight to join us and share a proclamation regarding school board appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to start with thanking all the school board members, the staff, and Dr. Ferguson, who were at the state of the community earlier today. And I promise you that I will not read this proclamation as fast as I read my slides. With that, I do want to just say thank you to each and every one of you for all the work that you do in our community. As I said earlier today, it is what makes our community stronger, the partnership between the ISD and the town. Thank you every single day. I appreciate it. On behalf of the town council and, excuse me, and the town manager, I have a proclamation to read. I also wanted to tell Dr. Ferguson, thank you very much, because I have I have two of my three children at home with their spouses, and all three of my grandchildren, and I snuck out of the house, so that they won't know it, but I'll just sneak back in and I'll be there. Thank you very much. With that being said, the Town of Prosper proclamation. Whereas the mission of public schools is to meet the educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society in an ever-changing world, and whereas local school board members are elected by their community members to do what's best for the students, and whereas local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students, and whereas local school board members are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation for our entire school system, and whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectation to the district. Now therefore, I, David F. Bristol, Mayor of the Town of Prosper, Texas, do hereby proclaim January 2025th as School Board Recognition Month in the Town of Prosper, and I urge all students or all citizens to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members and in working with them to mold an education system that meets the needs of today's and tomorrow's childrens. Thank you very much for all you guys do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it. Enjoy your family's time.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Okay, next up we have Zev Evans. This is a family. It's gonna take everybody. Are these your parents? Come on up. You're gonna be involved in this too. Come on. This will take every single person. Especially when you're opening a school, so. So we're very excited to have Zev Evans and her family with us tonight. She's the name of the principal at Thompson Elementary, which is the 19th elementary school in Prosper ISD. The school will open in 2025, 2026, August. It'll be ready, don't worry. Ms. Evans holds a bachelor's degree in elementary education and a master's degree in educational administration. Her experience includes teaching third grade and fourth grade and serving in the G2 teacher. She comes to Thompson Elementary from our great Olson Elementary, where she's been serving with Ashley Turner, the principal there. And she is, has, and continues to do a phenomenal job. I've actually been able to maybe work on some things in a hallway before I was a student, but maybe just not wanting to go to class. And Zev's like, and she allowed me to help. It filled my bucket. But truly watching you this magic role and the way that you handle the students, so thank you for that. Ms. Evans and her husband, Andres.
Andrew.
Andrew. Andres sounds cool. But we'll go with Andrew. You actually look like Andrew. Our parents, Parker, age nine. Parker's in a way, and everybody else. All right. And Logan, age seventeen. Call your dad, your names. I don't have them. Momma? Oh, Dad's name is Ener, too. Well, I want to say thank you. It's been an absolute pleasure getting to know Zev better in the district, but also being able to truly sit down and hear her heart when I was interviewing how much she cares so deeply for students and public education. So thank you for raising an amazing daughter, and thank you, Andrew, for marrying an amazing woman. And we won't take Mom away too much, but it will be just a little bit. But no, she'll be doing her absolute best work. And also going to play in the gym when the school gets done. Congratulations. Thank you. Next up, we have the new principal, Jeff McDonald, and his family. Well, you got the floor. I got mine, and I can talk. Right now, everybody get the little hands. So do not we recognize Jeff McDonald as 2025, 2026 Principal of Russian Middle School. With 19 years in education, Mr. McDonald's background includes teaching science, resource, math, health, and PE, as well as coaching football, basketball, track, and cross-country. A few things. He also served as a middle school athletic director and most recently as assistant principal at Rogers Middle School. He earned his bachelor's degree in kinesiology from Texas A&amp;M University. And his master's degree in educational administration from Lamarre University. Mr. McDonald and his wife Jenny have two sons, Jack and June. Very excited to be able to have Mr. McDonald. He came from a long tradition and time in a neighboring district and made a leap of faith to come and join us in Prosper ISD. We couldn't be more excited about it. Every time I'm at Rogers Middle School, Jeff is usually, well, he has hair some days because he's stressed out. He might have a mullet, and it's whatever is going on in his head. His heart for kids and the work that he does, it's really impressive. I got to see him actually speak on the Russian staff a couple of weeks ago, and it was so genuine, heartfelt, and exactly what the school is going to be doing. Great work with Dr. Ronis. And Dr. Ron is not leaving, just to clear that up. She'll be going over to Rosley Middle School. That would be one of our new middle schools. So congratulations to you. Congratulations to you as a family. We will take them away, and the gym is open to you. Come on up, play some basketball. We gotta take pictures. Next up, we have Michelle Falls. We're excited tonight to be able to announce Michelle Falls, current assistant principal at Lynn's on Ranch Elementary School, and will be the 2026 principal at Lynn's on Ranch Elementary Principal. And so we're excited for that to happen because it would be a nice transition and a passing of the time. Ms. Falls has been integral in the work at Lynn's on Ranch, working alongside the credit staff, students, parents, and Mr. Dunn. Mr. Dunn, he's been, I'm like, are you okay with this? And he was like, I mean, it's Ms. Falls I am. The deal had to be made, right? He thinks the world of you, and I do, too. Throughout her career, Ms. Falls has been a first-grade teacher, third-grade teacher, a fifth-grade teacher, and an ESL teacher, and an instructional coach. Ms. Falls completed a rapid and a journey with a bachelor's degree in business administration from Ohio University, who just won a national championship. No, it's a different one. There's gonna be another joke, but only that one. Ohio, okay. A master's degree in early childhood education and educational technology from Baltimore Wallace College. She's a proud mother of two college students, Parker, a senior at the University of San Francisco and Peyton, a freshman at Louisiana State University. And your husband is very willing to be. And I'm not gonna call you Andre. It's friend. Thank you so much. I know that it's countless hours of her away from home, and I know that the support at home has to be in a really good place for her to do her best work. And so I want to say thank you to you for that. I will say today, Ms. Falls was not at our leader meeting, but I got a chance to introduce our new principals. Ms. Evans was not there either. They were in training. Mr. McDonald was there, and he thought he was supposed to be in training because they were the dogs. I'm supposed to be somewhere, and I'm like, I don't know. But I really had, Mr. Dunnison was there, and Mr. Miller, who opened Lynn's on Ranch, and the school opened, and I said, Ms. Falls has been hired to fix everything that Mr. Miller and Mr. Dunnison do. And so everybody got a good kick out of that. So they choose to finish.
No pressure.
I'm just kidding. They both did an amazing job, and I know you will continue that, obviously. So thank you. Miss Sharice Hunt. So you know I have stories. If you have not met Sharice Hunt, or you've not been able to experience the energy that she can bring, just the positivity, you're missing out on it. She is the lady. Interviewed her many years ago, and gosh, I bet we spent over two hours talking. And I thought I could have been given my power to get her here, because she is so phenomenal. And she has continued to shine in each and every circumstance. And if you know anything about human resources, sometimes it's not always fun. Sometimes it's sad things that we have to deal with. And she does it with grace, professionalism, and just a whole lot of love and positivity, which is exactly what we need. Sharice is our Chief Human Resources Officer. She was chosen by the Texas Association of School Personnel Administrators to receive the 2024 Dr. Mary Hopkins Personnel Administrator Award. Mrs. Hunt is being recognized for her leadership, a high degree of personal and professional integrity, and the ability to recruit members to the district. She's always being honored for her involvement in the Texas-wide community of those regional and state levels where she demonstrates her solid understanding of strong skills in matters pertaining to human resources, personnel administration. And I will tell you, as a superintendent, it's always heartwarming because when there are different HR events that are going on, almost every second I make a text from some leader that I know in this state, and they are saying how much they love Sharice Hunt. Or if I talk to a employee where she has served in a district before, it's immediately like, I know Sharice, and Sharice is here. I love Sharice. And so. And HR? It's do we love, it's impressive. I'm gonna say so, but people shout at you. Thank you so much for the excellence you bring to our district. Love you. So the big announcements tonight are then, we have Middle School A, which is Jim Bridges Middle School. But number seven didn't have a name, and it's been sitting without a name. But we're at the point in time we really need a name. And if you know anything about Prosper ISD, and we put names on buildings, we wanted to really be something that's special, honoring of those who have served, giving back to the community, to the school district, and the way that they have led. And so tonight, I'm very proud to be able to announce that Middle School number seven will be named Kristen and Dr. Drew Watkins Middle School.
Yeah.
And it will open in 2026, 2027. Dr. Drew Watkins, a great mentor of my friend. I wouldn't be here today without him. So forever grateful for him and his leadership. He was a superintendent at Prosper ISD from 2002 to 2020, and then he sat here to retire. But COVID. No. He was ready to retire, and all of us. In 2002, this district had 962 students when he started, and only three campuses. In 2020, when he made his exit into a well-deserved retirement, 19,138 students in 1866. His wife, Kristen, who also served as an educator in the district, and I was honored to be able to be her principal, a little unnerved. Ms. Falls, that superintendent's wife, she was absolutely phenomenal. She served as an educator for 13 years. Eleven of those were in Prosper ISD, where she served as a kindergarten teacher and a special education teacher. The two individuals, their name won't be on this building, couldn't be anyone more deserving. And it is truly a special time, especially for the amazing work that Dr. Watkins did in the school district. Every time I'm driving around at this place where I'm at, I see him. And I see the presence of him and the attention to detail and the way that he cares so deeply about what this place has to be for the teacher. So congratulations to the Watkins. We also have the new Harper ISD Administration Building. It's not this one. We're gonna have a new one. One day, we will have a new one. But we wanted to make sure also that the name of the person who's going on that building would be honoring of someone who had truly played a foundation and left an amazing legacy. And we know that we would never be where we are had it not been for him. So I'm proud to announce tonight that the Administration Building will also be named Dr. Drew Watkins Administration. So he will have his name on two facilities. I'll be honest, if I could put his name on every building from here on out, he's that deserving. So congratulations to the Watkins, and obviously Dr. Drew Watkins. And what he was able to give back to this pretty district. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lindsay Crofts, and I'm the Suzuki violin instructor at Sam Johnson Elementary. We're so grateful to be here to perform for you tonight. My guess is that many of you have heard the word Suzuki a lot around Prosper, or have maybe seen our program perform in the district at some point. But perhaps you might not know what Suzuki even is. Well, it's a method of learning to play any musical instrument. But the violin was the first instrument to utilize this special curriculum written and created by Shidji Suzuki. I also wanted to point out something really special about the Suzuki method. And that special part is that the parents are heavily involved in the learning, in the learning process. These parents come to every lesson. They take notes. They facilitate practice at home. They motivate and support their child, and they probably dry a lot of tears, too. However, what makes Prosper Suzuki extra special is that the school board, Dr. Ferguson, and the fine arts administrators have welcomed this morning experience into our public schools. I know how grateful our families are to have this opportunity for their children, and I hope our music tonight demonstrates our thanks. We have three short selections prepared for you tonight that demonstrate some multi-level fun. Our third piece is a fiddle tune, which we'll be performing at our sixth annual fiddle workshop on February 4th at Prosper High School. We hope you enjoy it.
Awesome work, kiddos.
Awesome.
Great job. So good.
Awesome.
It's okay. You can play instruments. It's all right. The lines will figure themselves out.
So we have a very special video. So we have a very special video for you. It's my favorite interview issue every year. And we hear from our kids about what
I think it's when people have a job and they put their names on it. Be nice to people.
They make very important decisions like, um, when to start the school, like what time, what day.
Helps children succeed in learning.
Um, Dr. Ferguson comes write, um, like stuff on people's boards every year.
And it's also about education. That's what the school board is for. They're only for education and other things, but education is their top priority.
I think they take care of our Prosper ISD organizations and they plan fun parties for us so we can have fun.
Not they only care about us, they also care about their own children and their own families. And they also work as, as part of being as a school director, a member of the school board.
What? You might be my favorite.
Um, Ms. Holly and Dr. Ferguson. Dr. Ferguson.
Dr. Ferguson.
Dr. Ferguson.
Dr. Ferguson.
Ferguson? And, well, that's all I can, all the specific proper nouns I could think of.
Ms. Steven. And Ms. Radio.
I think, I'm not sure.
Ms. Betty Jackson.
I would try to make, I would try to first check if it's, if everything is going well and every, and everybody feels safe and, and I, and if, and I would just check if everything was okay, no dangerous things and, and I would, that's the first thing I would do.
I would have a fun party once a week.
Have the best time of my life at art class.
Like I would probably like put up posters like for more people to join the school. Have fun at recess.
I would help with kids who need help.
Probably make classes longer. I like school.
Prosper ISD school board, words cannot express our gratitude for each and every one of you. We are so lucky to have a collective group of amazing selfless leaders that love our students, district employees and community in the way that all of you do.
It is impossible to have a school district without a great board. Thank you.
Thank you for the countless hours that you dedicate to making mindful choices that support our students and staff. You are appreciated.
Thank you for all you do and the continued support. You empower us to be successful.
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Winker.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender.
Thank you, Mr. Dial.
Thank you, Ms. Stinson.
Thank you, Mr. Bieber.
Awesome. That's the best.
Hey, love it. Um, uh, okay, this is now a quick intermission that we have. Kids, y'all are more than welcome to stay if you'd like to, but, um, hey, y'all've got learning to do tomorrow, so y'all can go home. So give us just a couple of minutes. Parents, you can grab your kids and then we will start back here in just a couple of minutes' time. Going to get going again?
I think it's our people. And the staff of Prosper ISD witnessing.
Okay. Chatty. I like each other, that's good. Waterfall, that's the one. Hush, all over the crowd. Okay, uh, that'll take us to informational reports. We didn't have anybody sign up to speak this evening, so we will go to item seven on here.
Okay, so we have our current student enrollment. We are actually, um, as of today, I know that these are always a little lagging because we're putting everything together, but as of this moment, we have thirty-two thousand twenty-six students in the district. And, uh, as you can see, we've had an add year over year of three thousand one hundred and nine students. Um, as I said today, it says to the community, every kiddo that walks in the door gives us an opportunity to get better. So it is a blessing for sure. And then, um, we'll have a short video on our bond projects from 2019 and 2023. It's buffering. It's a lot of projects.
Everybody get off the wifi. Carter, what'd you do?
It's too many construction projects.
It's probably one of my kids on their PS5.
Oh, there we go. Okay, we'll go back. Okay, so we'll, uh, our maintenance facility, which we were able to dedicate on Tuesday night to Mr. Jerry Harple. That was a great night, fun event. Uh, we do have some finishing details that will need to get taken care of and then we'll get our maintenance team moved in there. There's a lot of things going on right now. We also have our Ag Barn, and so you can see that facility there. The project has been completed and will be getting moved into that. Animals, you've got different cells and things that are going on though for our students. And so, uh, we'll get equipment and things moved over. And then we're planning on having a dedication for this facility in the spring when it warms up just a little bit. It was a little cool the other night. And now we'll have, uh, Ms. Anderson will come forward. She's gonna do a career and technical education update for us and hopefully we can get that video for the bond projects buffered and ready to go.
Good evening, everyone. Hello. Um, please grant me a little bit of grace with my voice. It's been playing disappearing act this week, so hopefully we'll be okay this evening. Thank you so much for letting me be here to speak with you tonight. My name is Julie Anderson and I'm the Director of Career and Technical Education for the school district. And I am blessed to be in that role and get to serve the students of Prosper ISD. So I believe we're gonna start off with YCTE, Career and Technical Education is actually for everyone. Sometimes in some school districts, they put an emphasis on a certain type of kid that goes into CTE. And I love that Prosper ISD focuses on the fact that CTE is for every student. First, we aim to help our students become prepared for college, right? We want them to be prepared and empowered so that whatever that next step is, they are ready for it, right? We want them to be confident in their chosen path. We hear stories about students who change their college major seven times, right? We don't want those to be our students. We want them to go forth, save their parents maybe a little bit of money in their college endeavors, and be confident and skilled and capable when they enter that college pathway. We also want college to be an option for every student, but not the only option for every student. Some of our students are career bound, maybe by choice, maybe by opportunity, whatever comes their way. Um, so we aim to have them prepared for that as well. How do we do that? Through industry-based certifications. These are industry-recognized credentials that are valuable, have been identified by the Texas Education Industry, excuse me, Agency and Industry to make sure that they are relevant to today's labor market. Um, our goal is to have an industry-based credential in every one of our programs of study, and we will fulfill that goal in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So we're very excited about that. Um, in that career genre, we want all of our students to be employable and marketable so that when they leave our doors, they can find a job, they're marketable, they're more likely to get the position, they're more likely to promote more quickly, all of those types of things. In the marketable aspect, we also want our college-bound students to be marketable for scholarships, for college acceptance, graduate school, and whatever else they may want to partake in while they're in pursuing, pursuing their college degree, so to speak. One of the things we also strive to do is create opportunities for stackable credentials. One of our examples is health science. So as they progress through that course pathway, they can earn more certifications as they go. And then as they embark onto their post-secondary endeavors, they can get an associate's degree or bachelor's degree and keep on going. But we strive to create lifelong learners so they don't stagnate. We show them that determination and how those stackable credentials can lead to more opportunities for those students. Um, a holistic overview of CTE is that our goal is to really provide our students with industry-relevant knowledge and skills. Okay, we use hands-on, project-based learning for the application of CTE and core concepts. So we hear, you know, they learn all these wonderful things in core and we have really robust learning over there. And then they can take it into the CTE classroom and see how that applies to the real world, right? They get to practically, practically apply what they've learned in those core concepts in a real-world manner. If you've ever talked or heard Teresa Biggs or Stephanie Sype speak, you know that they reinforce religiously that content is a vehicle to competencies, right? Our goal as a teaching and learning institution is to build competencies in our students. And then they get to go into the CTE classroom and see what are those competencies actually look like? How do we practically apply them? And what is that gonna look like when I go into my chosen profession? So we focus on what our students are interested in, what is our community interested in? Seventy percent of our student statistics tell us are coming back to this area. If that's the case, are we providing what they need to be employable and successful in this area? So we have twelve career clusters, thirty-one programs of study, and a hundred and thirty unique CTE courses to kind of cover the gamut of student interests. If you look at this document here, if it pops up, I guess it's not, it's being finicky. But it would be a beautiful graphic that shows you one side of a document that outlines all of the courses that we offer within our career and technical education programs here in Prosper ISD. They are robust and they are valuable to our students. Oh, there it went. That's what it looks like, this two-sided one. Um, so to give you a little review of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, um, we had over eighteen hundred of those industry-based certifications earned by our students. That's incredible. And that's just the TEA-recognized credentials. We, when we include the ones that are on their list, we had over twenty-three certifications earned from our students from basic life support to coding, to health science, engineering, Autodesk. I mean, running the gamut, it's truly impressive. There are over thirty-plus unique certifications that we offer in the district. We have six career and technical student organizations. And if you know anything about board recognitions, which you do, when you have to announce all the students, it's a lot of CTE, CTSOs because our students are so successful in those fields. Over eighty-two percent of our high school students are enrolled in CTE. Over twelve thousand high school enrollments, so some of those are duplicate students who are taking maybe more than one CTE class. Over eighty-one hundred middle school CTE enrollments. And over the past two years, we've seen a forty percent growth in enrollment within our career and technical education programs, which is huge. It contributes like, it shows, excuse me, the contributions of our teachers, our community, our partners who are really investing in those programs and helping students be successful. Um, this year, we introduced two new middle school courses, Middle School Sandbox and Middle School Metaverse. If you're familiar with those terms from the working world, you kind of know what those mean. Those are aimed at hitting up our middle school students and letting them figure out like, what am I interested in, right? We ask our twelve-year-olds, what do you want to do with the rest of your life? Like, come on, some people are thirty and don't know that, right? So we want them to explore, check out the interconnectivity of those industries. How does everything work out? If I'm gonna be an engineer, what does that mean? Because I could be an engineer in the automotive industry or I could be an engineer in the agriculture industry, right? If I'm gonna be a chef, maybe I'm a chef on a cruise ship, I don't know, right? Like, what does that look like? Um, we also moved two high school credit CTE classes down to the middle school level so that our eighth graders can engage in some advanced curriculum because they were hungry for it, right? They were interested in it. And so we said, let's bring it down. We have over three hundred and fifty students that are in Principles of Applied Engineering and over four hundred and fifty students that are in Principles of Health Science because they wanted that early exposure to those career fields so they can get more learning, they can get more advanced in their curriculum, and they can get additional certifications. So we're very excited to see where those students go. We place so much value and we are so thankful for our community partners. Um, one of those partners is POG, and, uh, they actually partnered with some of our construction programs and agricultural mechanics to say, hey, do you have any students that are seniors that might not be on that four-year college-bound path that might want to start into industry? And so they identified some students, interviewed them, and put them into a sixty-day internship where if they successfully completed that sixty-day internship, they would have full-time employee with a very competitive salary after that sixty days. And so they actually took on one of our Prosper ISD students this last summer. And so those students can continue their education, they can earn while they learn, right? If they choose to, or they can stay on and they have a sustainable future for themselves. So we are very proud of that. Um, another one of our very valuable partners within CTE is our Children's Health Partner. In some of our professions, it's very hard to get those entry-level positions, right? Because they want you to have work experience before you can get a job. And you're like, how do I have two years' experience for an entry-level position, right? And so these types of relationships allow our students to have that. They can again, earn while they learn. That's one of our big things in, in CTE is we want students to have opportunities to not to contribute to the trillions of dollars in student loan debt that we see out there because they have credentials that will allow them to earn money while they're continuing their education. We also want to feed our community that feeds us, right? We know that Children's Health heavily invests in our programs and our students. So how can we create a pipeline to employ their industry? We had, they help us with our stackable credentials again within that healthcare industry. We've worked closely with the Andrews Institute, who's the more rehab side of things, and they actually have some more kinesiology students partnering with them to do some work-based learning and site-based experiences. We've also recently, um, entered discussions on getting some of our students into their associate clinics, like Centennial Pediatrics here in Prosper. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but getting some of our students to get work-based learning there. Those credentials in high school, excellent employment while they continue their post-secondary endeavors. And in health science, if you know one thing, the more you earn in terms of certifications, the more you earn in terms of money. So, we're helping them there too. Our additions that we've added over the past year, our Community Health Worker, Unity and Python. Unity and Python are computer science-based certifications. Our Community Health Worker is really neat because our kids can become employed at sixteen. It's working with healthcare systems and giving access to services and resources to underserved populations, which is huge, I believe, in the mission and goals of Prosper ISD to help everyone and to just be a really integral part of the community. In twenty-five, twenty-six, we're adding emergency telecommunication to our law pathway, which will allow students to become dispatchers for our law enforcement agencies. And that's really neat because it's a flexible hours-type thing. They can work nights, weekends, all the things. So again, earning while they're learning, while they pursue their secondary, post-secondary endeavors. We're adding A+, Security+, Linux+, in the computer science realm, Cosmetology, and the soccer industry four-point-oh, which I'm gonna talk more about here in a second. I'm gonna overuse the word excited tonight. I just hope everybody's prepared, okay? Uh, because I am over the moon excited about the opportunity to introduce CTE academies to the Prosper ISD community with the opening of Richland High School in twenty-five, twenty-six and the phenomenal, truly phenomenal facilities that we'll have there. Shout out, Mr. Tremblay. With those facilities and the opening of that school, we have an opportunity to create a really rigorous and innovative model for an elevated learning experience for our students within Prosper ISD. Our students are just top-notch, right? They are academically just off the charts. And so they're hungry for that elevated learning experience and that's what we're gonna give them. It's gonna increase their post-secondary readiness. And so we're excited about this, um, academy model plan. And we'll also look in the future at what academies can look like on some of our other campuses. So with Richland, our first three CTE academies are gonna be cybersecurity, cosmetology with, in partnership with Tony and Guy, and electrical engineering. So cosmetology is the one I'll start with. Um, Tony and Guy, if you, you might not be familiar with hair care, but they are prestigious. And, um, so our students will enter this four-year program and at the end, they'll get their cosmetology operator's license. They'll graduate with that, as long as they pass the test. I can't guarantee that, right? But they should, um, through TDLR. And this program, if they were to pay for it in the real world, would be about twenty thousand dollars. And our students are gonna get to engage in that through their high school career. And they'll only have to pay for their kit, but we'll talk about that later. Um, and the cool thing is they get to start taking clients while they're still in school. So they get that client relationship, they get to build up their clientele. And when they leave, their senior year is And when they leave, their senior year is primarily about running a business. So they're gonna, what does it mean to be an independent contractor? What does it mean to run my own salon? And when they leave, they will be certified, they'll be employable, and they will be capable. And so we're very excited for that. Again, there's excited. Cybersecurity, we've, we've worked very closely with our amazing technology department and the cybersecurity folks to put as many buffers in place as we can for the, you know, cybersecurity aficionados in high school that we have. Um, it is a unique and creative curriculum platform. They'll have in- embedded virtual cyber range to kind of provide a safe place for them to engage in those cyber combats. Um, these certifications that they're gonna earn through this program are highly marketable, highly valuable within the industry, so that A-plus, A-plus, Security Plus, and Linux Plus, all very marketable. They can go straight to industry, or they can continue their education. And in the next couple of years, we'll add dual kind of opportunities as well. With the format we're starting with, it won't be available the first couple of years, but it will after that. And our third and final is our Electrical Engineering Academy. This is gonna be a showstopper. And I really hope that you guys all come out and take a look when it's open. Um, it'll have a classroom that's dedicated, this is an electrical lab where they learn circuits and all the electrical things. Um, and then they'll have a six thousand square foot clean lab, is what we'll call it, or clean shop, where you go in, you'll see robotic arms, there'll be hydraulics, pneumatics, um, programmable logic controllers, like state-of-the-art stuff, like you would walk into T E, T I, or Global Wafer. And this is the equipment that you would see, and our students will be trained on this. Electrical engineers are in short supply. It's a daunting major, but our students will leave our doors ready for that college endeavor, should they choose it. Or they can go and work at places like T I and Global Wafer and be very successful. Um, we all have a lot of, we're seeing a lot of two-plus-two options as well for our students, where they're partnering with Collin and institutions like Texas A and M, where they can go to two years at Collin, and then they're finished their two years at Texas A and M. So it's kind of saving them some money and keeping them close to home for a little bit longer if they need that. So we have that straight to industry, and we have the collegiate pathways as well. And they'll earn their Socket Industry four-point-oh certification, which is kind of like the standard in the semiconductor industry right now. Finally, just want to thank a lot of people in this room, all of you in front of me, um, our community partners for investing so heavily in our CTE programs and our students that have chosen that as their kind of aim and focus, because it really does change lives. And, um, we're, another event that's coming up is, we're thankful for P E F that's gonna come in. And they're actually doing an Experience CTE event in March on one of our campuses, where they're actually gonna do the things that the kids do in the CTE classrooms to see where their investment in the school district is going. Um, thankful that the district places us within curriculum and instruction and realizes that this is a curricular program and instruction matters with CTE. And so, thank you to all of you. I, Mr. Van Wolf has come to our advisory board meetings before. I invite all of you guys to come, we'll be having one coming up here soon this semester. So, thank you, and I look forward to seeing what we can do with our amazing students and programs.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Fabulous.
Thank you.
So cool.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
All right, that brings us to consent agenda. Okay, uh, we have the things, uh, up here in front of us, y'all have all seen them. Is there a, uh, any comments or a motion to be made?
I'll move that the board approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? That is all six of us, none opposed, that passes. That takes us to action items this evening. And we have an audit to discuss.
Let's see, so come and give us a brief presentation on our financial audit.
Good evening. Um, I'm here to present a summary of the final twenty-three, twenty-four audit. Um, the audit has been uploaded for your review. Um, we did spend some time with the finance committee and our external auditor, Mr. Deaton, last week, um, for a more in-depth look. I'm gonna start with the general fund. Um, the actual revenues ended up being thir- three hundred and seventeen point three million dollars, or forty-three point four million dollars increase from the prior year. Um, that's a fifteen point eight percent overall, um, increase. That's a combination of a couple of things. Um, it's actually a decrease in property tax revenue, but it's offset by a fifty-one point seven million dollar increase in investment earnings. And as you know, the homestead exemption and the freeze and all that did, did a lot of, um, thanks to our property tax revenues. And the actual expenditures were two hundred and ninety-seven point eight million or forty-eight point nine percent, forty-eight point nine million increase from the prior year. That's about a nineteen point six percent increase. But the majority of that is in areas of instruction and facility costs, so that makes sense. Um, our, we are under budget by nineteen point four percent. Um, the majority of the budget variance, uh, about eight point three million on the expenditure side, um, consisted of savings in payroll, uh, costs in several different areas. We did have several vacancies through the year and things like that. Um, the majority of the budget variance, um, on the revenue side was about eleven point one million of additional property tax revenue and state aid. And that just had to do with the changes in the homestead and the freeze and all that, that, that kept everybody guessing. The state did come in at the end and gave us more on the M and O side for the freeze adjustment, but we weren't really expecting that, we were only expecting that on the debt side. Um, we did, uh, determine to transfer out three point five million. Um, two point five of that was to a local construction fund for projects that might come up that we weren't aware of. And also one point million to a risk management fund. Um, we did have no negative functional variances, and we did not exceed the amended budget. I do want to point out that there are some references at the very bottom. If you're really, really interested in digging through the audit, um, it does explain where these numbers come from and the schedules and the page numbers. So for the general fund, this results in a net change of sixteen point three million dollars compared to twenty-three point five the previous year. And that brings the total general fund balance to a hundred and sixty-eight point six million dollars as of August thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. Um, there's sixty-six million committed to construction, but is available for use, um, if needed. Uh, we did have to, um, designate two point two for prepaid, which as the district grows, that just gets bigger and bigger. Um, and then we're required to assign the fifteen point five, uh, adopted deficit for the twenty-four, twenty-five in that fund balance. Um, so that makes the unassigned fund balance of eighty-four point nine million or twenty-eight point five percent of the total expenditures, and that equals about a hundred and four days. Um, if we add back in the sixty-six million of, uh, committed construction, um, that would give us about a hundred and eighty-five days. So that's healthy. Um, and we just wanted to say that, um, Prosper I S D places a great importance on financial stability for sustaining long-term growth. Um, we have lots of challenges, and we want to make sure that we're prepared for future needs. Um, a solid fund balance ensures that Prosper I S D can weather unexpected challenges, um, take advantage of opportunities, and continue progressing without financial constraints. So we have several areas that we are, um, focusing on to maintain the healthy fund balance while still supporting the continued growth. So we have a lot of forecasting going on, uh, revenue diversification, expense management. We're working on strategic res- uh, reserves, investments in growth initiatives, and, uh, reviewing financial metrics on a regular basis. Next, we have the debt service. So the actual debt service, uh, tax revenue was a hundred and five point nine million. And, uh, it was twelve point three million higher than the previous year. The actual debt service expenditures were a hundred and four point one million. Um, in net of the remarketing that we had to do, um, that, that was sixteen point five million higher than the previous year. Um, other resources is, is having to do with, um, premium, a premium on a bond issuance. So that makes the total debt, debt service fund balance is at twenty-one point nine million as of August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. And this is all reserved for debt payments, associated fees, refundings, or remarketings. And then we get to our property taxes. Um, the property taxes are, um, continuing to to decrease on the M and O side based on the tax compression. The taxable value was affected by the additional homestead exemption, um, and the over sixty-five freeze. The total taxable value was eighteen point nine eight. It was up two point six billion from previous, from the prior year. Our total delinquent taxes are only three million dollars, which sounds like a lot, but it's really not. Um, one million of that was for twenty-twenty-four. So our auditor is just always amazed at our, um, delinquent taxes and our tax collections. Our current tax collections were ninety-nine point six, and our total tax collections, including the delinquents, was ninety-eight point seven. This next slide is, um, it's the, it's the non-major other funds. So even though you adopt food service for audit purposes, um, food service is combined in this non-major other funds. So, this is a part of, the, the schedule that we primarily use is, uh, Schedule C-three. Um, and this is all combined in one column. So it's broken out into a Schedule H-two, and it provides a detailed breakdown of all of those. And the reason I'm mentioning this is mostly because you adopt the food service budget and you can see it in more detail. Um, on the federal funds, though, if you can look at the table there, on the federal funds, we spend what we receive and we cannot exceed our award. So the only one that does have a fund balance is food service. Um, the fund balance in food service was three point one million as of August thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. Um, we did have a limitation of only being able to have three months, but as of twenty-three, twenty-four, they increased that to six months, which helped us. So as you can see, uh, we're, we're good at six months, but we would have had to, uh, have a spend-on plan on the three-month limitation. And this is the best thing that you can have in an audit report, no material weaknesses or deficiencies. We received an unmodified opinion, which is a clean audit. We had no audit findings. And just to remind you, this is the T E A version. We will be, uh, presenting a more comprehensive one as we did last year. And we will be posting it as soon as we get that done. And we'll also present the, uh, Popular, which was like a condensed version of that. So that's coming up for the second year. Um, and that concludes the presentation. I just want to take a minute to say, uh, a shout-out to my team and, uh, the campus and district administration and leadership and all the collaborative efforts that are put into this. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sees, absolutely fantastic, and it truly is a team effort. And I want to thank our school board members for their contributions, feedback, and sometimes trying to figure out how do we make something happen with the money that sometimes we don't have that needs to come from the state. So I truly appreciate the work that your team has done and what they've brought forward. And then certainly for our finance subcommittee to be able to weigh in and give feedback. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did talk about the, uh, finance subcommittee. Thank you guys again, uh, Mr. Cavender, Mr. Van Wolf, Mr. Dial, um, all on that. Um, so thank y'all, I know that y'all spent several hours last week, kind of with a deep dive into that, so, um, not to put you on the spot, but was there anything jumped out, you know, any, anything additional to add, um, anything of that nature?
No, nothing out on my side, it was great. We got a chance, for those of y'all that don't see it, to go through this with a pretty fine-tooth comb. It was over a hundred pages of data, and we met with the auditors and with, uh, Ms. Sees and her team and Dr. Penn, and got a chance to go through it. So, uh, I feel, uh, very confident in the financial health of the district and the way that it's managed and ran, considering we're really running two businesses in parallel, running a core business, maintaining the day-to-day, and we're also managing a growth business at the same time. And, uh, I applaud the efforts of the way the business, uh, department has done it, so thank you.
Nice, thank you.
Well said.
Um, okay, with that in mind, uh, this is an action item, so, uh, is there a motion to be made?
I'll move. I move that the board accept the twenty-three, twenty-four annual financial audit as presented by the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Webb, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Um, any further discussion on that? Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf, for, for your commentary on it. Um, anything else? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote, all in favor. That is all six of us, none opposed, that passes. Um, that takes us to nine B, consideration and possible action regarding the updated, uh, authorized users for the text pool, investment pool. Let's see here, we are updating those. We saw in the packet, uh, the people that are authorized there. Um, Dr. Ferguson, anything further to add on that?
No, part of the, the audit that did come out, though, is that with these investments that the district is making, there is a return to the district. So I really appreciate, again, Ms. Sees, her team, Dr. Penn, making sure that they're keeping a tight eye on that, so that those investments are giving us some level of return, especially as we go through these times, trying to balance all of the financial challenges that we're facing.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, with that in mind, is there a motion?
Sure. I move that the board approve the authorized users for the text pool, investment pool as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. Uh, any discussion, uh, further discussion on that? All right, hearing none, all in favor? That is all six of us. Um, again, we didn't have anybody sign up for public comment, so that'll take us to, uh, superintendent report.
So I am so beyond proud. Um, I know that we had a post that went out on social, on social media, but to get the H E B Excellence in Education Award is something pretty phenomenal in the world of education. And to even be on the shortlist of the other districts that have been recognized, that is good company to be with. And those are people we want to be on a list with. This is truly just a representation of the collective effort of the board, of all of our amazing staff members, our parents, our students. It is truly everyone pouring in to be able to get recognized at this level. So I, as a superintendent, I just am blown away. Um, and especially as you think about, uh, days gone by, as we were sitting at Hall of Honor and some of the things that take us back into our past, and to think about where we are in twenty-twenty-five, it's, uh, next level. I've had several, uh, esteemed educators from across the state reach out to say congratulations, because they know what a big honor this is. And, um, truly want to thank Ms. Trotter and her team, too, because tasking her with, hey, uh, we need to go after this, because we're, we're in this, we can do this. And her being able to really put those fine finishing touches on it to get us into that last level. H E B will actually be HEB will actually be in our district uh, on March twelfth, and they will come out and make some campus visits, as well as do some interviews. And then we'll have the final say. And, well, I love to win, and so I hope we win. And then our Athletic Hall of Honor, uh, such a great day, celebrating so many that really gave back to this community, um, rather through athletics or being a coach or a community supporter, and being able to honor each of these individuals. Truly a humbling moment, but um, I'm always in awe of where we were to where we are now. And to be able to give this level of um, prestige to these individuals who probably never thought that something like this would happen for them in Prosper ISD. Um, you know, and going back into old times to hear what they did in the gym that's just down the hall as a basketball player on our original football field, it's, it's pretty heartwarming and a special moment, and really leans into our vision of being grounded by tradition, soaring to new beginnings. And then Jerry Harple. I don't know how it gets much better, um, than Jerry Harple, the dedication. Our sole and only maintenance man for twenty years in this district, up until two thousand and four, when he retired, had the honor, and I was very proud of our maintenance team, uh, very large team from our maintenance group, showed up for the event, and being able to bring them forward and show Jerry and his family how much it's grown. Um, and to also say that his legacy and really what he poured into the culture of Prosper ISD and setting that foundation for our maintenance department, that it's still alive and well today. And it, it is definitely a s- a special time, and you can see Jerry, he's pointing there, reading his bio plaque, um, about who he is. And it's a, they're a really neat family, too, because they've stayed super close-knit. And to watch the grandkids and how proud they were of their granddad was, um, it was a special moment. So I wanna thank you all for honoring so many people that have given to this community for so many years, or given to the school district, and for you to lean into that and to not miss those small moments that we can make really big. Because most districts might just go, hey, it's a maintenance facility, and move on. But to really look at the history and who got us to this point, and to honor that individual is a very special thing that Prosper ISD has. So, thank you for that.
Okay, that will now take us to closed session. We will now recess into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Government Code, excuse me, Chapter five-five-one, Section zero-seven-one, zero-seven-two, zero-seven-four, and zero-seven-six. Thank y'all very much. The time is ten fifty-five PM, and we are back from executive session. Uh, let's see here, that uh, brings us to thirteen A, consideration and possible action regarding hiring contract personnel. May I have a motion?
I'll make one. Uh, I move that the board approve the hiring of contract personnel as presented by the administration.
All right, thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. All in favor? That is all six of us. Uh, and then that brings us to thirteen B, consideration and possible action regarding superintendent, superintendent contract. Uh, may I have a motion?
Yes, I move that the board approve the superintendent's contract as presented by the board, to the board.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Webb. Is there uh, any comment or discussion to be had?
It's an honor to renew contracts.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Ferguson.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, with that in mind, all in favor? That is all six of us. That passes. That brings us to ten fifty-six PM, and we are adjourned. Good night.